Hearing none. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak for or against this proposal? Seeing hearing none. I will now declare the public hearing closed and council, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution for a voluntary annexation.
I so moved that we approve the voluntary annexation.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item B, council, the next item is also a public hearing for the rezoning of the Roston property. Since this is a public hearing, I declare the public hearing open. And again, Allison from CAG will make the presentation, please.
Thank you. So same piece of property here. So this is part of the process when annexations occur and they are outside of the town limits, not in the ETJ, then you have a county zoning associated with it. So again, 1.61 acres, this is just show new where. So the timeline, legal requirements, petition was filed, which would be the annexation. So this is like the second step as part of that process, you have to establish zoning. The set of the public hearing, again, set for, I'm sorry, the public hearing was set for tonight at the June, July 28th meeting. And then we had the two consecutive ads written in the paper. The property was posted and adjoining property owner letters were sent out. As I mentioned earlier, the property itself is zoned R1 Burke County. The request here is to basically give it a town of Valdez zoning, so making it consistent with what's surrounding it, that would be R12. So that is the request at hand. Staff recommends that the board approve and then planning board recommended approval of this request as it being consistent with the land use plan and the vote was unanimous from the planning board to approve. Any questions?
Questions, council? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak for or against this resolution? Okay, seeing none. I now declare the public hearing closed and council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented by Ms. Adams.
I so move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Kudos to Mr. Austin. He took a piece of property that was in Burke County and transferred at his request into the town of Valdez, so he'll now be paying property taxes to the town of Valdez. The rezoning is simply to make it the same classification as the adjoining property.
Mayor, if I may, we'll also need, and we can do it by separate motion, but we'll need a motion to adopt the consistency statement and the reasonableness statement. Typically, those are contained in the same document.
They are in the same document. It should be in your packet.
So we can either amend the motion to approve and adopt at the same time, or we can handle that by separate motions. It's probably easier just to handle it by separate since you have a motion and a second.
Okay.
Whatever that was, I so move.
Let's go ahead and vote on approval first.
Okay. I need a vote, council, to approve the rezoning of the Roston property. Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, next, I'll entertain a motion.
It'll be a motion to adopt the consistency statement and the reasonableness statement that was in your agenda packet.
Okay. Questions, council?
You need a motion.
Please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Seeing none, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, council, next item, C, call for a public hearing to modify unified development ordinance. This time, I call for a public hearing on the modifying the unified development ordinance our, which will be presented by CAG. And since this is a public hearing, I declare the public hearing open and ma'am.
Sorry. It's actually to set the public hearing date. And that date should, I think, September 2nd, is that when your next meeting is? So the, and I'll just give you a quick brief. It's basically to change the date that the UDO goes into effect because the general statute, it still hangs out there about downzoning. The legislature hasn't fixed that yet. And so the hope is, is that if we extend this for six months, that that will be corrected and then that date will be the actual date that the UDO is official. And so that proposed date would be January 1, 2026.
What date would you like to do that on?
Can we do that September 2nd?
September 2nd? Okay, 6 o'clock.
Handle that by a motion and second.
Yeah. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing date and time at September 2nd at 6:00 PM to discuss the modified unified development ordinance.
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, council, item D, approval of the Iron Mountain Contract and Resolution of Tentative Award for the Valdez Bless Project.
Yes, so the town was awarded the grant in the amount of $801,983. This was supposed to be a part of a much bigger process, a bigger project that has since hit a pause button at the time. We were hoping that that project will pick up in the future. However, we did not want to lose this $800,000 grant. So there, so we asked our engineers to come back, negotiate with the lowest bidder, which was Iron Mountain Contractors, and develop a plan where we could put stuff in the ground and around that would not deteriorate with time. For example, we wouldn't want to put any computers or technology or electronics out there and not, it would not be running because it would deteriorate. And use the total amount, the grant, so when we do pick up the project, hopefully in the future, we're that much closer. The new project budget includes construction at $634,723, a contingency of $7,000, and then $38,500 to cover construction administration costs of the third party.
Questions?
That total cost is still quite a bit under the total $801 that was available, isn't that correct?
Yes, and.
And the reason I'm asking that is that I noticed the contingency that McHill Associates recommended was about 1% of the actual, of the estimated cost. I just wondered if that might be a little bit light. If we, if the contingency goes more than $6,000, would we still be covered by the grant or should we approve a larger contingency at this time?
So just give me one second. I'll. One second. Hold on a second. So the engineering costs had already been incurred, so we've already paid out some of that grant fund for engineering costs.
Well, my, okay, my question is, they're recommending the award of the project in the amount of $634,723 and that they recommend the town establish a construction contingency amount of $7,000, I thought it was like $7,000, to cover any quantity overruns or unforeseen circumstances. The point of my question is, I just thought $7,000, which is slightly over 1% of the total cost, is a pretty small contingency. And I just wondered if we ought to maybe kick that contingency amount up a little bit at this time so that we won't have a problem if it ends up costing $10,000 and we have to eat $3,000.
And if, and I think the thinking behind this was if we was going to do the total project, we would much, we would need a much larger contingency. Since we're doing separate items, they're pretty much set, they're pretty much the, there's a set fee for that. And if we run into overages, we can, I hate to say steal from Peter and pay Paul, but we would operate within the budget that was given to us and do as much as we can with it because we're not going to be the finished product no matter how we do it.
Okay, so I guess the answer is if it does go over, we can still draw on the grant funds.
Yes.
Okay, so we're covered.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Iron Mountain Contract and Resolution of Tentative Award for the Valdez Bless Project.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Seeing none, opposed, motion carries. Item E, approval of D.R. Reynolds' contract for public safety facilities. Mr. Herms.
Yes, so after much debate, going back and forth, we, we, I think we finally nailed down our contract between the town and the contractor to do phase one of the study, the phase one of the project for police and fire facilities. They'll come in and look at different options that we have and determine which gives you pros and cons and make a recommendation to this council on how to proceed for each location.
Okay. Questions, council?
How many options are they looking at?
Currently, I believe it's four.
Well, the RFQ said three, that's why I'm asking that question.
Yeah, and, but I came back and asked permission from the council to adjust that to add an additional location. We took them to more than one location and without doing extensive, in-depth research, just by their experience of walking through the buildings, they found one location that deserved this more in-depth look. It's the old town hall side of the building, of the old facility there. The administrative side for police and fire will be, would need to be demoed no matter how we proceed. They're thinking that we may be able to utilize some of the existing structure with some alterations or renovations, of course, and it may be more economical and more space to do it that way. That's not, they can't say for sure without getting structural engineers involved, but that's part of the big process, part of the process, processing in their opinion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I'm still puzzled by this. I don't know about the council, expanding the scope of this phase one RFQ from three options. I thought it was still three options. As a matter of fact, I had a prior council meeting, I asked about adding an option and it was my understanding was we couldn't. We had, if we did that, we ran into some contractual problems probably with the other And the other thing is that last year, the council decided not to consider renovation of the 121 Fayette property. I don't have a problem with taking another look at that, but what I do have a problem with is that what we have found in the last year is that this building, on which we, our taxpayers still owe over $2 million of payments because it was way overbuilt. In fact, it was built large enough that it presently houses our entire police force. And so one of the options would be, I would think, could we add a little bit to this building and use it as a combined police department and town hall, somewhat like Bowling Springs does. Bowling Springs is a town this size and they have a combination town hall and police department, which is basically the same size as this building. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna expand this RFQ from three options, which is we issued to four, my request is that we make it five and have them look at, let's put everything on the table. Let's let this council and the citizens look at all the options that are out there. Is that unreasonable to?
Yeah, I almost stand up. It's our responsibility. I'm not on camera. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Oh. Yes, we can, at this point, now, after tonight, once we get a contract in place, I think it becomes much more difficult to add things to it. I did talk to the company today, they can add an additional location for an additional fee. He did say that he walked through the building and he, his gut reaction, his gut feeling and his years of experience says there's going to be more to doing this building than what, what you would typical realize for a number of reasons. Once we start working on this building, it opens us up to the new codes and the new regulations and that could become more difficult to administer in a newer building than a total, while we're still trying to operate inside this building. Going to a building that's currently, that would be vacant once, once construction started, it makes it more, a lot easier to operate and at the end of the day, may save the town money. I'm not a construction engineer by any stretch of the imagination. We'll do whatever council wants. This is what was presented to us by our contractor. They think that the options presented are the best options. By doing a walkthrough without doing more in-depth studies. If you want a more in-depth study, they'd more willing to do that. I believe I sent out an email, I think it's an additional $12,000 to add this building. We can certainly do that if that's council's wishes. And if you have any additional questions that I, you don't think I answered clearly enough, we do have a representative of the company here in the audience that you can ask.
I just, in general, I think citizens ask questions and council members ought to ask questions. Do we look at all the options if, when we're going into something big? Some of these things we've looked at, we rejected, and then we come back, we're gonna look at them again. We could simplify the entire process if we just decide as a council to go with one option and, you know, let's focus on that one. We keep kicking this thing back and forth and things keep changing, but I, I just think it would be good to look at everything at one time or throw out everything except one and look at one thing. But we just can kind of cherry pick things and, you know, we had proposals from seven contractors. We arbitrarily decided just to interview three of them. A fourth one seemed to be extremely well qualified on by their proposal. But we make those kind of decisions and we have citizens say, well, especially those that have been involved with construction and managing businesses say, well, you know, why didn't you look at that or, you know, why are you overlooking this?
You need to put that in motion and we need to move on.
I will say, I'm sorry to interrupt, I will say that we did take them to several locations in town and the contractor was one of the ones who chose, he's not staff.
And Ted said, chose what? What did you say?
The four options, the buildings to look at. We did take them to multiple locations in town to look at. Again, these are walkthrough, these are not in-depth studies. So you need to know that going into it, that these are just walking through the buildings, walking around buildings, looking at them and relying on their, their expertise and their years of experience, not staffs.
So they like the four options that are in the contract? They thought that was the best?
Those are, if, because I told them we needed to give council four and that's the four they chose.
Okay.
Todd, tell us again those four options, would you?
I've got them, I've got them here in front of me.
Yeah, if you would, thank you.
So, so the four options are, number one is renovate the existing building at 215 East Main for a police operation. Number two is a new fire station on the empty lot at 200 Massal Avenue. Number three is a combination police department and fire station with some shared space on the empty lot at 200 Massal. And then the one that was added is to renovate the old town hall portion of 121 Fayette, Fayette, is that how you say that? Fayette Street for police operations. So those are the four currently in the contract that was in your packet. So there are a couple of things I would tell you. If you wanted to move for approval of this contract, it would just be a motion to approve the contract in your packet. If you want to change this contract, then you would just need to specify the change in your motion.
Oh, all right, now, so, in the, but in the RFQ, we specify three options.
So this is a qualification based selection, not a request for proposal? So you're selecting based on qualifications? So when you change the scope, you're not, you're not changing who would be qualified to entertain the project? So I don't foresee any issues if you modify the scope of the contract, is council?
Counsel, Ms. Zimmerman.
I was just gonna say that I think our council, we've already talked about this building and it was not, we didn't want to proceed looking at this facility for part of the police department. So I feel like we've already answered that question and talked about it and that's why I thought we were ready to move forward with this plan, which I think instead of kicking something further down the road, we need to move forward.
I would say from my perspective and the contractor's perspective, we have plans to start tomorrow morning, depending on what council direction council gives us. So whichever way, I'm correct, am I correct? We're planning on starting tomorrow morning on whichever one y'all choose. If you go with watching the package and what's being proposed, we're ready to go with that. If you go to amend it, we will adjust and move forward, but it is my goal to not let anything slow this down, to keep moving forward.
Yeah, the council talks about a lot of things. We actually rejected renovating the 121 Fayette's building last year. So, you know, we talk about things, we decide things, we kick this around and I guess I would probably make a motion to, to adjust this contract, except I'm gonna be off the council before they ever can come back with their recommendations. So I don't want to toss something out here that I'm not gonna be around to see come to fruition anyway. So I'll let somebody else make a motion and we'll vote on whatever's moved and seconded.
Okay, council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the D.R. Reynolds' contract for public safety present, public safety facilities as presented in your packet.
So moved.
Second? Further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries with none opposed. Thank you, council. Item F, information items for council discussion. The first one on here is number one, fiscal year 25 preliminary final results as of June 30th, 2025.
I understand, and I watched it online, the pre-agenda meeting, I understand we went through these pretty in-depth. I would be more glad to answer any questions. I will highlight that preliminary, we haven't went through the audit yet, but preliminary, it looks like we're gonna add around $500,000 into, back into our coffers from this year. You need, I will add on to that, that's not gonna happen every single year because once we start the project, we're gonna have less money to gain interest off of. So this year is a windfall. Hopefully, we can continue up the steam, but just remember, most of that's coming from interest income. So as we start these projects and we have less money in the bank, we're gonna draw less interest. So I'm cautiously saying, don't bank on that every year, just from that lineup.
Okay. Questions, council?
Well, just a couple comments on it. Most of that $500,000, I think $115,000 is coming from a boost in interest income, the rest of it from a reduction in expenses. The concern that again, I leave the council with, I mean, as I leave the council, the concern I leave behind is that we put the budget together and as of a little more than a month ago, when we approved the budget, we were looking at a set of preliminary estimates for the year end. And then a month later, turns out there's a half million dollars more, which is good, except last year, the spread was like $638,000. It was even more. It came, half of it was from the property taxes being miscalculated and the other half was from interest coming in way over. And the danger with the council laying, dealing with those kind of numbers is that, I don't know what kind of backgrounds you, the council members in Maidenhead, but in Valdez, people come to the council almost always out of public service positions where they're not dealing with making budgets and generating revenue, but they're dealing with, every solution is raise taxes. And even in March, we had somebody come in and admonish the council for not raising the tax rate. And that's, I think there would be less of that if we could get these projections tightened down during the budgeting process a little earlier. Just an observation.
Yeah, and I haven't done a budget with this council yet, really. But I'm very, I'm very open and transparent when we do the budget. A lot, but the problem we have is a lot of these things, we don't realize until we close out projects and close out the quarter. And there's a lot of revenues that we only get once a year and sometimes we hit them after, late in the year. So this isn't unique to Valdez, this is pretty, pretty uniform throughout the state. And, and I will say this, and Bo's not here, so I'll go ahead and say it. I don't, unless you have experience in working in local government, you don't have variable in how much work that man does and how he keeps everything going straight. We operate a very large budget and you basically got very few people in finance. And so I think you're, we're in great financial shape so far. I will say that there's some expenditures that we're gonna be facing, that we're gonna have to figure out how to fund. But I think as a whole, this council has held tight and, and the budget is in great shape. Unfortunately, sometimes we do have things that pop up. This time, it was a good thing because we, we did not spend money out of the, out of our coffers for projects because we hadn't started them yet. So that money stayed there another 12 months and gained interest that we may have not have been expecting for it to stay there that long. So.
Yeah, just two, two human interest comments. One is certainly, I agree, Bo Ekel is, is as fine an accountant as, as I've ever seen. All, I've only ever hired CPAs in the past, he's not a CPA, but he's as good as, as any of them were. So he's excellent. The other side is, I've talked to hundreds of residents two years ago. I, I could regale you for two or three days with the sad stories I got about the 67% average tax hike that people got in 2023. And that was, that one was undershot. That one came in, it was, it came in $300,000 more than projected. So it's, you know, all you need is three people on council who want to raise taxes and it hurts hundreds of people in town who are suffering with CAC taxes.
Next item, Status of Mobile Food Ordinance.
The current food ordinance is in a draft form. It, it could change ten times before it gets to this desk, but from what I understand, we're going to refine it a little bit, send it to the planning board, and, and then eventually, as it works its way through the process, it'll end up here.
Sounds good. Questions? Okay, residency requirement for Valdez Town Council Advisory Committees. I think.
Actually, not me.
Yeah, that's me, and I think we've talked about that. I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions from prior conversations.
Questions, council?
Yeah, I put out a suggested list of about six committees, and the only one I would take off that list is the ABC store. I urged council members to comment on them, did anybody have any comments? I only heard from one council member who said, councilwoman said she, she agreed with that direction, so everybody, everybody has that list. We take ABC off that list and, unless there's any objection to it, nobody else has said anything about it. It was just, so I think the, the suggestion was that we just, we just add that requirement to those, the five committees.
So how about, for your next meeting, I'll draft a resolution for each of these committees, excluding the ABC committee, adding that requirement for your consideration?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your consensus?
Yeah, adding not requirement, I'm not sure.
It's a residency requirement for committees that serve at the pleasure of town council.
Okay, all, all, all committees.
Excluding the ABC.
Okay.
Okay. Item G, Updates on Agreements and Projects Approved at the June 2025 Meeting. First one, the COG Planning Assistance.
We went over these a few times, so if it pleases council, I'm going to go through all four of them. If you have questions, stop me. The planning contract has been executed. We are currently working with the COG, she had to leave to go to, to have a planner, a professional planner here on Wednesdays. They, we have had some hiccups. We had one that went into labor Wednesday morning, they didn't show up, we, we had two people sitting here waiting on them. That one was understandable. At the same time, the COG is having the same problem we have, and they have several planners out on leave right now for various reasons. So to the bridge gap, we've hired an intern to come in, he's going to be here Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and he will be, he currently is working in the North Wilkesboro Planning Department. And while he might not be able to do the more complicated, complex stuff, he will be a, a voice that has some background in planning, that can answer the court, the general questions from the public. I want to put a shed out here, what can I do with this property? You know, the general stuff, that ninety percent of the stuff that comes through the planning department, he will be able to address that. Long-term plan is to get someone in there full-time. We're going to have to take the steps that we can take to, to do the best we can with the resources we have at hand at this time. So that's how we addressing that. The Stormwater Partnership, we've been in partnership with the COG for years for this. They probably handle, I'd say eighty to ninety percent of all local governments in our region. It's a federal mandate, and it's very complicated, and you've got to have very specialized engineers that oversee that. So very few towns our size or even bigger than us handle their own stormwater programs. First Try on Financials, this is a group that comes in and helps budgeting models for local governments. They're an excellent, have an excellent reputation. We have had their, I shouldn't say wait, I've had my first meeting with them, Bo's had several meetings with them. We got to go and look at their first swing at our product. It was, it was very in-depth and, and the first question I was like, so when I go in here and start messing with stuff, can you reset it back to what it was before I started messing with it, in case I do something I ain't supposed to? And they can, it's saved on their servers. They, every question that me and Bo came up with, they had a really good response. I think it's going to aid this town greatly and aid the staff tremendously in forecast, forecasting models for our revenues in the future. And then the application for her lean funding through DWI, which is Division of Water Infrastructure, is my understanding that that is the first round, has to be submitted August 1st, which we did meet that deadline, it's for our water plant, and then we're going to try to meet the November deadline for the second round for our sewer plant. Our water plant sustained more damage during the hurricane, therefore, the points is higher if you've never dealt with a grant before. Everything's on a point system most times, the more points you have, the better chances you are of getting funding. So we took the one that had the most points and submitted it first, and then we're going to go back and submit for the sewer on the second one. And, and that's all I have, unless y'all have further questions on those four.
Questions, council? Thank you, sir. Managers Report.
Okay, excuse me. We're still working on the developing a cap, a capital campaign drive for the pool cover. We have reached out to several companies. The only company that is interested, because in realistic, it is a large project for us, but it's a very small project for most companies that do, that specialize in fundraising, is, and I'm not going to even try to pronounce this name, it's K-I-N-E-T-I-C. They're a nationwide company, but they do have a presence, and I believe it's in the Triangle or Winston-Salem area. We've met with them a couple of different times, and right now, they're in the process of getting a proposal back to us that will meet our needs. A lot of these companies, they base their reputation on being able to meet whatever goal we set, and that's going to play into their proposal. We haven't got it back yet, so I don't know what it's going to look like. But they did say if they move forward with it, they felt pretty confident that they could hit their projections with, with six to twelve months. Old Colonies Players present historical outdoor drama from this day forward at the Fred B. Cranford Amphitheater, Fridays and Saturdays at eight P.M. until August 9th, which is, is coming up Saturday. Come out and enjoy, enjoy it. I, I get to see it for the first time Saturday night, so we get, I get, experience something new. The 50th Annual Walt Disney, Walt Disney Festival and Foot Race is also this Friday and Saturday. To see the full list of events, please visit, visit valdez.com. Again, something new, I get to experience my first Walt Disney festival. And if I'm, on Friday nights, the Summer Con, series will continue on Temple Field at seven P.M. until August 29th. The next agenda review for council meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 25th at six P.M. in this council, and the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 2nd at six P.M. in this room for the council. Does council have any questions or comments for me?
Thank you, sir. Council Comments.
I just want to encourage everybody also to see from this day forward, I saw it two weeks ago, the 57th season, it is outstanding, so I encourage you to support the Old Colony Players and take advantage of seeing fantastic outdoor drama from this day forward.
Anyone else? Okay, council, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to, I'll get this right in a minute, under the guidelines of 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer, or employee. I'll entertain a motion for such.
Same move.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.